Alright, everybody, thank you. We can start our meeting tonight. Is there any additions or deletions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just we need to um throw on to old business uh the legislative letter that we tabled last time.
This?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would make that a motion that we just add that to the old business.
It was seconded by George. Any further conversations? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any other additions? Alright, approval of last meeting minutes, that's would be May 12th.
So moved.
Second.
There any corrections? Hearing on all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Highway.
I just update the um trailers that were approved by the select board to be purchased were purchased and we got them at the garage.
Who's garage?
Pardon me?
Who's garage?
Our calendar garage.
Oh, they're down here.
Yeah, um, the twenty ton for the excavator and the trailer. We actually got lucky because there's two thousand twenty-three left over.
Hmm.
That's branch back in the um prices a lot better than the other ones that we knew with seven thousand dollar difference. And then we also had approval to include to purchase the sixteen foot enclosed trailer to put our sign package in. And right now what we're doing is we're setting that up, putting the rails in so we can strap things down, making um stuff so we can hang the signs and all that stuff, make it user friendly. A lot of thought went into it. So quite impressive to have that car. In your packet, you will see the bids for outfitting the new Mack truck we have coming.
Mm-hmm.
And before we move on it, there's some discussion I'd like to bring up. We had priced out with a brine tank, a hundred twenty gallon brine tank to be installed on that truck behind the cab. And that would be sprayed, that brine would be sprayed on the salt as it's being spun onto the road. My thing and the research I've done, we'd like to do a pre-treat up before the storm if we're gonna use brine. With that being said, this system put on a new truck is about five thousand nine hundred dollars for the whole system with the pump and everything.
So the tank, the pump, the to mount it?
To mount it.
Is fif- what'd you say, five something?
Five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, and that, to me, that's not gonna do what we really wanna do if we do go with brine. We'd like, like I said, do a pre-treat. And with the pre-treat, we're talking, I think it was nine hundred thirty-seven gallons to do all the tire roads for a pre-treat. And that means filling that tank up all the time. So we got brainstorming and I have a suggestion. We ended up with uh possibly purchasing a skid tank to go inside the five fifty with the spray bars all on it. And do a pre-treat that way. And that system costs about ten thousand.
Okay.
So we we're up to almost six thousand dollars if we outfit the new truck with a small tank. So if we, for four thousand dollars more, we can have
A larger tank?
A six hundred gallon, approximately six hundred gallon tank, all set up with the booms. And doing a pre-treat, that means we can go out, if we had a storm coming in tonight tomorrow, we could actually pre-treat roads this afternoon. If we went the brine system.
So in other words, it's it saves you putting that salt down the road that we see getting kind of run off now, like the granule getting run off. It's gonna adhere to the road and you're gonna use it primarily for tr- pre-treat.
Pre-treat.
And if we've, so I guess my question is if we find out that that does what we want it to do.
Mm-hmm.
What are the chances of down the road, so let's say we do that for a year and we're like, hey, this is working well. We want to take the step to set that truck up. Can it be set up after the fact? Just spray the spitter?
You're talking?
Yeah, like could, so in other words, I hear what you're saying. Set the one ton up first. But I'm saying, so let's say we do that for a year and we're like, you know what, we really like this. Let's, let's talk about that new truck we just got, add in the tank for six grand. Could we, could we go back and do that after the fact?
Yes, but that's a different process entirely, right?
Well, yeah, I I and I understand that. I'm just wondering what the chances are.
And then the the whole system to make all the brine and stuff is very expensive to do it, do it right. For one thing, we don't have really the facility to do it. Um, we need somewhat warmer enclosed area. Uh, like fifty degree weather, or temperature. Temperature. So I got ahold of Beldens and talked to Kent and he got back to me, they will sell us the brine um at seventy-five cents a gallon. And it would cost about, oh whatever, no, okay, back up. It's gonna take twelve hundred gallons to treat the roads. And that's gonna equal to nine hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Of a pre-treat?
Of a pre-treat.
Per storm?
Per per storm.
What do you figure we put on, cost-wise, granulated before a storm? Did you do a price comparison?
I didn't do it that way.
It's about eleven ton. And to do a thousand gallons, you're at two thousand three hundred pounds of salt or a lot, they were right there.
But you're buying it from Belden?
No, I don't think you can. I think that's, you're gonna wanna check the math on that one. A thousand gallons, it could cost you twenty-three hundred pounds of salt to make twenty-three percent. Be, or it would be eleven ton or ten ton.
I figured like
Three thousand pounds of raw salt.
I figured off eight ton of salt to make that.
Two point three pounds per gallon.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-three percent. So.
So they quoted your seventy-five cents, you're saying?
Yes, that's what they come back with the quote.
In my mind, uh, an overriding thought or concern is the environmental impact of all that salt just going.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's a heck of a lot of salt.
So, and the other thing, you know, we're gonna spend almost six thousand dollars to set up this truck with a little tiny tank. We're four thousand dollars more, we can set up the little truck with a skid tank. And haul approximately six hundred gallons of liquid. We have to make two trips to do all the roads.
For the five fifty, it would be two trips and the big one would take how many trips?
Multi-year, looking at like six, seven trips.
Okay, so you're saying it's roughly, how much is it to pre-treat the whole town with brine? How many gallons you figure?
Twelve, twelve hundred fifty gallons.
Twelve fifty?
Yes. At seventy-five cents is nine hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty cents.
Thousand bucks in there. We have maybe, well, six, seven storms, that's not too bad. I mean, some years we only get two or three.
It it's not just just the storms, it's the ice.
Well, yes.
The temperature. You'll be treating the roads
For the ice, yeah.
Mo- mostly for the ice.
Yep.
And the regular storm.
Yep.
But, yeah, when it snows, yeah, we probably, you know, seven, eight times of snowstorms or whatever. But you're gonna be treating more often because of ice.
Well, I continue to think that we oughta give this a shot because it seems like a good way to at least really understand. And I think it's worth the expenditure to do that. That's my personal opinion.
You're talking about getting the tank for the
For the five fifty.
Well, and I think the the important thing too, what I'm saying is we can always go back and potentially add it to this system.
Yep.
We're, we're still setting the truck up that we could add it.
It's still got the space.
It's got the space and it could, it could be added to this.
You should set that truck up anyways because some of the towns are actually spraying the brine on the sand. And you can put it out so you got grip and you got ice melting abilities now. I mean, think of if you cut that salt budget right in half, that's sixty thousand dollar savings and what are you talking now, about twenty thousand dollars? To get you, save, you know, forty? Brine's the way to go. It's gonna be, gonna be forced upon us where it is and
And that's where I really We don't wanna invent a wheel here because it's already invented.
Right.
And I'm seeing with water quality and legislature and stuff that there's a good chance, there's gonna be grants coming down through. They already give us grants for our ditches for um hydro connected waterways. And probably some of that might go away and shift over onto that other side, maybe. I don't know. You never know.
Hard to say.
Hard to say.
MRGP certainly isn't going away.
No, by no means.
We wish.
Yeah, but by no means it's not.
Right.
I, I don't, I'm staying with George. I think the five fifty getting that equipment, uh, and that's good for start first. If we have to go any further, then we'll have to, maybe by that time there'll be some grants for the equipment.
Yeah, and that
To create the
That's where for right now, my suggestion is to build this truck without that tank on it and add it later if we get, need to go that way, that route. Because for four thousand dollars, we can set up the little truck, four thousand more.
What's your timeframe on the body build, like how?
It's gonna be like April next year.
So we got time to
So what I'm saying is, do we have time to sit on this for a little while?
Yes.
Yeah, we could use it, use it all winter, the small truck. By next April, the fall season will be just
Well, I guess what I'm saying is how far in advance do we have to order?
Go up there, they, actually, they had one in stock, the little truck up, they could install it. Well, no, they have nine hundred gallons, but he's, he can get the smaller ones around
For the one ton, you mean?
Yeah. So my suggestion is save the fifty-nine hundred for the new truck right now, not put the tank on it, behind the cab, the little tank. And go extra four thousand dollars and set up the little truck for right now. And that is immediately, we could actually use it this, this lot next winter here.
And then ag- again, if in the future we wanna think about doing the mixing, mixing ourselves, we have time to understand what we're working with and all of that, so.
That's what I'm saying. And by that time, maybe the government will have some grants for us to, let's take a look at it over.
So what I got for calls on bids is uh Viking without the brine tank on it is down to a hundred and thirteen thousand, that's taken off the fifty-nine hundred. And HP Fairfield with the brine tank was a hundred twenty-three thousand, ten thousand more.
Didn't they have to extend the chassis of the truck too?
Yes, they did.
Yeah. So if you, if you get it without the tank, we can't put a tank on it then?
Yes.
Well, alright.
Because the space is
They're making it big enough to do that.
Yes.
I, I didn't understand.
You can add to it.
So, does that mean that every time that tank's empty, you've gotta go to Belden's?
Hmm.
And, and, and they're open during the storm season?
Well, the thing is, with a pre-treat, it's like if we're having
Right, I understand, right.
We have that timeframe.
So it's just for a pre-treat, it's not for actual use during the
You could.
Ice or the snow.
Problem is, the little truck does all the little dirt roads
Right.
And all the little paved roads, the dead ends and all that.
Yep.
Cause I actually run that myself. I'm all over town, the whole town, where the big trucks are designated, one on Shrewsbury side, one in the valley, one on Chippinuk side. And then I go around and do the little dead ends and
Yep.
And it's really working out well the way we're set up right now, the way our pattern is. Everybody does all the tire roads because those are primaries. So we, believe it or not, we're usually all back about same time. If somebody needs a little more help, we'll send a truck to help finish up.
And this is for tired roads only?
Yes.
Yeah.
We do not use an ounce of salt on the
Right, because it just turns the most
You shouldn't need to. Now, on the little truck, do you sand with that when you plow or not?
Yes.
You do. So you put this tank on it?
The body's gotta come out, the tank's gotta come out.
Okay.
And this tank is set up with legs on and stuff.
Now, you, you take that off with a bucket loader or?
Have to go with the forks.
Where do they need the heated bay? Is it where they're making the brine or where they're storing it?
Both.
Cause brine won't freeze if it's circulating. You have to have a circulating pump in it. Agitate or something.
To basically
Keep it moving.
Circulating it.
Keep it mixed up probably too.
And we're in, you know, we, down there, you oughta come down and see the facility we have down here to understand, we really don't have much room to put a two thousand gallon tank and like that to, and then you gotta
Cause at this point
Then you gotta truck it down, fill that tank, and then offload into the little truck. It's just as easy. And if we do go this route, my thought is, the little truck, start pre-treating, do middle road, Shrewsbury side. Your tank should be empty. Head back to Rutland and then come down Creek Road.
Come back the other way.
Come back the other way.
Hit that side.
That way, or, or vice versa. So, you know, you would end up closer to Belden's.
Just one thing I thought, what, so Danny's handle's up first, so I know there's public wanting to talk, but Danny's handle's up, so the teacher in me's coming out.
Uh, I like the idea of trying it and doing the small. Um, the only other op, the only other, if you're going to the big picture um, and eventually you're gonna need a place that's heated, and eventually you're gonna need a, to try to make it yourself. What if you had a trailer setup with the bigger system on it, so you could just attach to it?
We, we actually tried to spray trailer.
Yep.
Okay, to, to get you up to speed with it. We didn't have the right mix ourselves.
Sure.
And we actually froze the road up where if we had the right product, but what we found out, just doing what we did, we had issues with turning it around, you know. It's bad enough when we dust control the dirt roads, turning it around and stuff. It's like doing cord line road. We have to go all the way down or uh
Graded on your next time through. Graded the north end of the cord line road. Our, our end, on our town.
You stepped into that game.
Yeah, I know I did. But that, you know, that we tried that and, and our trailer, trust me, I just do not uh use it as much as we have.
No, I was saying like a smaller pub, designated to trailer just for brine. Back it in somewhere it's warm, you're ready, you're already ready. You know, that's just future.
Mm-hmm.
The next step up.
Yep.
Addressing that, but that's just a thought. I wouldn't say like your flatbed or anything like that.
Right.
Cause you don't need that big of a
So what they're doing is some towns are buying a uh like, I don't know what they call it, Ford six hundred or something like that, flatbed.
Yeah.
You know, that truck is designated for
For it, yeah.
That.
It's like a dump to roll off.
And that's a, that's another thought right there, designated truck versus a designated pub.
But the, the issue I have is we're having enough financial problems keeping the trucks going. You know, within the town taxpayers.
So just looping back to the question, what's the lead time that they have to have on the bodies, the body for the Mack, the new one?
We need to get on this now to get on the schedule. We're already behind eight ball and hopefully we have it by April.
Okay.
And the truck's supposed to be delivered the end of July, first August to Sheldon Trucks.
To start getting built?
So we need to
It'll be built and delivered Sheldon Trucks in Williston. And then it'll set there until Viking is ready. If we approve the Viking body. When they do, they'll just drive it up the road for four miles.
And Viking will do their thing?
Yes. So my suggestion is not to do that hundred twenty gallon brown, brine tank, save the fifty-nine hundred and put it towards setting up that little truck for ten thousand.
To get the first, as a first step?
As a first step. And then down the road, if this doesn't work out, and we want a big tank on a bigger truck, we have that spray unit in the five fifty to sell or whatever, and get recoup most of our cost back out.
Cause it'll be stainless anyway, it's not gonna lose.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So the two bids I have is HP Fairfield, like I said, is a hundred twenty-three thousand, and that is with a brine tank. And he didn't get back to me about subtracting what it costs to take that off. And I'm sure he's not gonna be down ten thousand dollars. He's gonna be about the same as uh Viking.
Where, where is the, where is this located?
What's this?
Where is it located?
HP Fairfield's over Hopton, New Hampshire.
Yep. And Viking is right up
Is Williston.
Yep.
Cash, how many trips did you say you had to make with the big truck if you put the brine tank on that one?
Take a hundred twenty gallons and it goes twelve hundred gallons.
Ten.
Ten. So, alright, labor and fuel.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Versus two trips.
That's correct. Yep.
And the little truck, like I said, doing the pre-treat, like if storm coming in, we could've done it this afternoon.
Right.
And then got back here, pulled it off, put the tailgate back off, getting ready for the
To sand.
The sand or the salt, whatever application is gonna be next.
So they're gonna get you a price of, like a final price on that as well?
For
The little truck setup?
Yes. And he ballparked it right around ten thousand. He was pretty close. He was trying to get me a quote, but he said with the holidays and stuff, everything was Nick can talk for him.
Well, I move that we accept uh Cash's suggestion and have Viking do the setup of the new truck minus the cost for the uh brine tank.
I'll second that.
Do you have any further discussion? By the hearing on all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Good job, sir.
Try.
You gonna follow up with the tank for the
Yep.
The five fifty, yes, he's gonna be getting us a quote.
Is that the only size tank, the largest tank you could put in that five fifty, is that, is that size?
Yeah, about six hundred gallons.
As far as the weight goes.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
So just to be clear, I just wanted to, I was gonna ask this before we voted, but we were already done. You're taking five thousand dollars off this price because fifty-nine hundred's coming
Bring down thirteen
It's gonna come down to one thirteen. Okay, just making sure I was clear on that. Okay, yeah.
And our quote for this is June, good till June twenty-seventh.
Yeah, but either way, you're, okay.
We're good to go now.
Anything that I have to sign?
Doesn't look like it.
No, not at this point.
It's just their own math. It takes the cost of down fifty-five dollars to make the brine, we're paying three hundred fifty for it from Belden. Just a point of interest.
I think, I think that's good information, though. I think we need to get this going under the, the purchase of the brine system. And then start looking at how, what we gotta do to maybe have that.
And, and actually, what I, I'd like to do is if we do get into the brine systems, let's get three towns together and somebody have a satellite.
That's not a bad notion.
And have one system for three towns, split the costs that way. This is a suggestion.
That's not a bad idea.
This line's not Ma Holly Way off.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it'd have to be neighboring towns.
Yeah, you take, you know, Wallingford, Kemah, uh, Rutland towns already tried it and they threw that out the window, they looked.
And uh what's
And I don't know, maybe in the state, we may wouldn't get in with them over here and be trans.
Yep.
That's a possibility, I'm not sure.
Sounds, sounds okay. Let's, let's pursue it.
Alright, moving on.
Thank you.
It uh, what, what is it, under construction, the trailer is old and new, did you wanna talk about?
That's, that was already done.
You're done with that?
Yeah, alright, but
I'm good.
Because we jumped from one discussion to another, I just wanna make sure you're okay with that.
Hmm.
Uh, so you're good, Cash?
Good to go.
Jimmy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, you got, got me on three questions now. If we get that spring tank, can you use that for your dust control tool?
Yes, we could.
I don't, he might not.
So now, now you don't have to worry about turning around the trailer. And you're, you're only gonna do one dirt road at a time, so I think six hundred gallons would cover most any of your dirt roads.
Uh, no.
No?
No.
What are you putting down on a dirt road, like on a trip? Are you doing a full tank, half a tank?
Oh, no, half tank. We got three thousand gallons, like each tunnel road.
So you're doing like a thousand gallons?
What we learned, we tried skipping, it don't work.
Yeah.
You need to do, I don't remember what the exact gallons per mile is. You need to do that to do the
So you probably would be a similar setup, then you probably need two tanks to do the, to do the, if you're doing a thousand gallons a treat. You're talking two of these little tanks to
Yeah, and actually, we have the outside storage for that because that can be cold.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Cause you're using it in the summer.
Okay.
Okay. That's chloride you put in that, right? Calcium?
Yeah, calcium and magnesium chloride. And then we got two, three thousand gallon tanks down there.
Okay.
And it started out that we're treating our salt prior to that. And now we're buying three, the salt pre-treated.
Chuck, you store a lot of that stuff over to the transfer station too.
Right, what's that?
Don't you put some of that stuff over to the transfer station during the, during the winter?
No.
Okay.
Mower tractor and stuff like that go over there.
Okay.
Okay, um, now about grading. Um, roads are getting kinda rough again. Is our grader running alright and our operator alright to run that?
It's been going. What roads are rough? Cause I've been
North, the north end, or, yeah, the north end of the cord line roads, getting quite a few bumps down through it.
Hey, last time I was up there a few days ago, didn't seem to be too bad. So I know there's some here and there, but we had more stuff going on and what I did, okay, I'll bring that up too, long I'm still on the subject of highway. I decided and I talked to the crew, I says, we've had issues with the mower tractor. And the grass is somewhat getting up there, parts of town, like the middle road, this in the valley. I said, it's time to get that tractor out, test drive it, see how much mowing you can do, in case we have breakdowns, we'll have time hopefully to fix it if need be. Not gonna wood.
I was gonna say, you seem to be making good progress.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah, you did a nice job too.
Yep, it looks good.
Yep.
Pass that on to the real crew.
Maybe keep the poison burst up under control by mowing it early.
Mm-hmm. And that, that's what we found by time, we actually, that first year I was here, second year, we mowed early and they kept it, but then we had problems with the tractor.
Came back later.
Ceded. And now you don't see as much.
I think, a lot of places he ever trail, we did two passes, which really, he used good discretion because I think we're under um norm, he only wanted to do one pass.
Yeah.
And you couldn't keep up, you know.
Well, the issue with that, all of a sudden the, the brush and corpse are
Right, scared pushing over.
Out of the roads and stuff.
So, so yeah, he did a
And I've had, when I mowed before, I had actually motorcycle guy pulled up beside me, two of them did it two different times. Stopped me and I was like, oh, great, I probably hit him with something, you know, with the mower. And he stopped me in the middle of the road and I was like, okay, I hope he, and he goes, thank you for opening it up. He goes, when we're going down through, we can see green deer or something occurring.
Good.
Anything else, Jim?
Well, third question, why did we have a man get hurt um taking a snowplow frame off? Do we have troubles with that truck and need to do some repairs to it?
Nope, stuff happens. Stuff happens.
Well, why are we taking a snowplow frame off, I guess?
To eliminate weights off the front of the trucks that's not needed during the off-season. And actually, you pulled the frame off the little five fifty today.
Seems like a waste of time to me and then having somebody get hurt.
That's, that's my call, my judgment.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jim?
That's it.
I'd have our favorite guest here tonight. I'd have for approval of the select board warrants.
I need them down this way. I don't have a
No, go ahead, Robert.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. We'll come back to that then, after you wanna wait?
That's for charity.
Yeah.
We can move on, I think, Robert.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's why I was, I, the guest, Devin Neary. You wanna
Sure.
The map is folded up over there.
Yeah, I don't think we'll need it. That is okay. Um, so uh just as a follow-up, you know, we um came to you all, I think it was May seventh with our launch of our regional plan, third phase of public engagement, and also to talk about the draft future land use map. Um, I know there was some pretty intense discussions during that meeting. And um so I watched your select board meeting following that meeting and saw and listened to some discussion um sort of as a follow-up. And was concerned about some of the rhetoric being used, some of the discussion topics. Act one eighty-one is really complicated. You know, it's two hundred pages of statute. We don't expect anyone to be an expert on it. Act one eighty-one is really complicated. You know, it's two hundred pages of statute. We don't expect anyone to be an expert on it. And it is a big change. So I, uh, reached out and met with Mike and George and John McKenna as well. And we sort of talked about here, here's the reality of the situation, what sort of, how you should approach this map revision and what it ultimately means to the town. So that was a good discussion. I think we relieved a lot of their sort of anxieties about the process. But they asked me to come back to just answer questions, be available to you all, um, to sort of explain and bring further light to the situation. I do wanna say I'm really happy that you all decided to have a public forum about this. I think that's a great strategy. Several of the towns we're working with are doing this as well or already have done it. So, uh, just so you were all aware, we have already met with all twenty-seven towns. Um, and several towns have already made map revisions, got us back comments. The thing, what I want, really wanted to press upon you all today, um, and really what we got into with George and Michael at our recent meeting is that. You know, I understand there's a lot of apprehension and issue around the sort of rural categories and what it potentially means for future development in the town. What is critical to understand and take away from this, this, um, future land use map, uh, update is that this map only relates to act two fifty. So if your project doesn't activate act two fifty, this map doesn't apply. It will go through your normal zoning processes. That is probably ninety-five plus percent of the projects that come through Clarendon just by volume. I went back through, looked at the act two fifty database to see what projects have gone through act two fifty in Clarendon over the last ten years. It's mainly been the car dealership, V-Trans, the airport and a few small businesses, like stuff at the airport, industrial park. So it's not a huge volume. Now, what does that mean? If something were to go through act two fifty, how does this map relate? Well, in your case, it would just be status quo. It is exactly the way act two fifty operates now. This map really relates to those exemptions to act two fifty that are possible if you meet the criteria within those village areas, planned growth areas and village centers and downtowns. So your town doesn't meet all the criteria to access those yet, right? You're missing a couple of components. However, if you did reach that status and wanted to opt into tier one, those areas within the map designated as villages or down, well, you don't have any downtowns. Villages, planned growth areas, uh, village areas could potentially see some activity relief. That being said, the rest of the town, and if you don't opt into one B, it is status quo. So, you know, we currently have a future land use map. We've had one since nineteen seventy-one. And that map functions the same way this will, map will function. When there's an act two fifty application, it is a way for the act, the regional planning commission, which is all of our commissioners. You know, we, the staff of the regional planning commission has, have no weight or say on sort of how the commission treats act two fifty applications. And the regional planning commission is just one of ten criteria in the act two fifty process. And we look at two things. Does it conform with the regional plan and does it constitute substantial regional impact? And that's not good or bad, it's just an objective measure. So. When we talk about those rural categories and how we've mapped rural general, rural ag and forestry, rural conservation. This is not limiting what you can do on your land based on this map. To be clear, if you are in those rural categories and your project falls under act two fifty, you will go through the act two fifty process as you would now. Our plan, and this is different across the state of Vermont, but in the Rutland Regional Plan for twenty twenty-six, we are not restricting growth in those areas. Unless that growth exists upon, you know, a class one wetland, which you're not gonna be able to develop there anyways, right? There's state level agency of natural resource, um, restrictions and permitting process that's, that you have to go through. So, um, I know that ultimately was the crux of an issue for you all when I heard the discussion was, is this gonna limit what I can do on my land? To be clear, our regional plan is intended to promote development, promote use of our land in the way we want to. Obviously, we don't have control over the act two fifty process. So. Another factor that I wanna mention, so, um, we'll get back to that. Another factor I wanna mention is, you know, in terms of those areas that could be exempt from act two fifty. The villages, the downtowns, the planned growth areas, we have already, through our methodology and statute, stretched those as far as we can. However, we're willing to entertain any ideas about, you know, when we sat down with George and Mike, they were saying, well, you know, maybe the village area could extend to these homes and this business. That's the type of feedback we really wanna hear. You know, this statute and the methodology are fairly strict in how we can't just blanket approach the entire town and say. All of Clarendon will be exempt from act two fifty. If we tried to do that, our plan would not pass muster with the land use review board. And our entire region would be without a regional plan. And that means none of the act two fifty exemptions would be allowable. So this is high stakes in that regard. However, you know, I think in terms of what this means for Clarendon, generally speaking, unless you were to opt into that tier one status. I don't think twenty twenty-six would look any different for you all than twenty twenty-five. The only change, and it's completely independent of this map, is the road rule. They brought that back. It was part of act two fifty more than a decade ago. And that is development that includes a new road of eight hundred feet or a combination of new, new private road of eight hundred feet. Or a combination of new private and public roads of two thousand feet or more. That will dump you into act two fifty. That is a new rule, has nothing to do with our map.
Is that a, is that a public road or, or could that be a driveway also?
Would be a driveway also. Yep. And now we don't have good definition around this yet as, does a pre-existing pent road count or a logging road? You know, we don't know those things yet. The last thing I wanna mention, and then I'll be happy to answer questions, is the, the issue and anxiety around tier three, critical natural resources. Um, we sat down, we talked about what is the difference between tier three critical natural resources and rural conservation? And the, the separation is we do not map tier three. That is a separate standalone process with the land use review board and the agency of natural resources. Now, I wish I had way more answers for you tonight, but they are currently in their public hearing phase of getting information and developing this framework now for tier three. This is what I can tell you definitively. If we were to wipe out all rural conservation on our map. You still would have tier three areas because it doesn't matter how we map it at all, the state is gonna map it the way they want. Now, we have provided, uh, input as regional planning commissions and we have a seat at the table as a work, in this working group. And we are trying to advocate that in statute, no town can have a disproportionate amount of tier three areas, even if you have a lot of natural resources. Cause no one town is supposed to be burdened by this change, right? So we are trying to press upon the land use review board during this process to make sure that this isn't super far-reaching. But again, you know, we're advocates for the town, but we are not the ones developing this rule. So I do wanna make sure that everyone understands tier three in this map, they are separate. You know, our control over the land use areas are limited because of statute is so clear on what they are and what they aren't. However, we do have some play and especially that's why we're coming to every one of our towns and working with them to say, hey, does it make sense? Does this need to be modified? Do we miss something? And already in our discussions with John and George and Mike, we saw there are a few areas that we knew right away, those could be tweaked and changed. Um, so we're really interested in working with you on, on those. Now, do, is what I'm saying making sense? Is it alleviating any of those early concerns? And what concerns do you have or questions for me tonight?
Well, I, I don't have any more questions than what we discussed a few days ago. And as I understood our discussion, what we need to visualize as tier three is a separate state-produced map that would lay on top of what we're working with now.
Exactly. Yep. It will be treated as an overlay at some point.
So. And they're still working on it though, right?
They're in the middle of working through that process right now. They have to be done by the end of this calendar year. So we will know by the beginning of twenty-six what this looks like. Now, unfortunately for our timeline, we'll already be through our public hearings because our plan expires next June. So we, we, that's why we're in this really unfortunate quick phase situation that we're in. And just to give you the timeline, because I know that was an issue and you're not alone. A lot of the towns we've worked with are like, really, this is a short period. We started this plan in the middle of twenty twenty-three. Act one eighty-one was not signed into law until July of twenty-four. The methodology for the mapping wasn't completed until February of twenty-five. We have quickly gotten a draft available for everybody by May of twenty twenty-five. We have to have our plan ready for pre-adoption and submitted to the land use review board in October to start our hearings in January. And another hearing in March to be able to adopt in April or May. So like. The timeline here is narrow because, through necessity, cause otherwise we'll have an expired town plan or regional plan. And, uh, there are many towns in the region who will be extremely upset by that, uh, cause they won't be able to achieve the act two fifty exemptions that are critical. To support housing and business growth in our region. So. But sorry, uh, did you have a question, Robert?
Um, no, I guess I just wonder why this meeting happened without the rest of the board present, cause I feel like I've missed a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, so we didn't cover anything that I just didn't say right now, you know?
But you keep referencing, well, we talked about that with George, we talked about that with Mike. Like, I feel like you're, there's more here that we're not getting.
But, no, there.
No, there's no more, Robert. I mean, and I'm happy to meet with any of you more. I wanted to meet with them quickly, cause I saw that meeting, I'm like, hey, is this help you? You know, I'm not, wasn't trying to circumvent some public process. I'm here now and I'm planning to come to your hearing on the fourth. So, um, that will be four times I've met with Clarendon and that's three more than all of our other towns. So I'm committed to getting this right, my guys.
The meaning that we had here was primarily John McKenna, who's, uh, you know.
Planning commission chair.
Right, and he wanted to have a couple of the sets of ears just to hear the conversation. So it wasn't feeling like he, we, he was talking behind everybody. And so by having this same conversation tonight, now off, and this is what we stressed, that we wanted all five select board members to hear that. And that's why.
So I guess my follow-up is, I know you're saying tier three's not on there, which I think was a little misconstrued in our initial hearing. Cause my understanding, based on how she presented it to us, was that the dark green areas were gonna be tier three. That's the way I took it.
And they don't know what's gonna happen.
And that, and that anybody in dark green was gonna be tier three.
Yeah, so that must have been a somewhere miscommunication. And again, we're covering a lot during these meetings, so it's, it's easy to get construed. I can tell you definitively, they're completely separate, you know?
So yours, so just to clarify, just because I think this is, this is where people were really.
Yeah, and understandably so.
Those of us that have, have property on there that is either in land use, which is kind of the teal color, and then there's property.
Forestry.
And then there's, the forestry was the dark green. Basically, we got, at least the way I walked away from it, was that we got told those are where the tier threes are gonna be. It didn't necessarily, it was, mean it was gonna be one, but basically prep yourself because when tier three, and that's what the really uneasy part of this is. Is when tier three comes down, first off, the map, as all the paperwork said, is locked in. There's no changing it once this is done. So.
You mean, once we adopt?
Yes.
Yeah, that is accurate. That's why we're doing this now.
So once it's locked in and tier three comes down, you may have a tier three dropped on your property in one of those areas that you've got no idea about until this is all done at the end of the year.
Yeah.
And that's, that, I think, at least for me, is where the scariest piece for everybody is.
So I think this will answer everybody's fears completely. It doesn't matter what color map we produce, they're gonna map their tier three areas, cause they are mapping those without ever seeing our maps. You know, that is gonna be, our map is gonna be submitted well after the tier three map is developed.
And you say they, make it clear.
It's the land use review board and the agency of natural resources.
That's all.
Um, and I do think they're doing their best and they have a public process during this to try to make this reasonable. But, you know, we are out of, out of the picture on that decision-making process, obviously, you know? At the end of the day, we're, we work for you guys. That's our number one priority is making you and the towns happy. Um, so that's who we're advocating for during this process. And yeah, is act one eighty-one imperfect? No doubt.
Yeah. Like I say, I think my biggest takeaway was the tier three was the biggest.
Yep.
Issue.
Yeah. And it still may be, but understand that that map is not it. It is not it. Um, and you know, we can wage that tier three war if needed, when that map comes out and understanding what that looks like. Cause we still technically do not know how they're gonna treat tier three. There's no process, or there's no framework in which they're saying there's gonna be an advanced act two fifty right now. That is sort of what people are assuming is gonna come out of this, but we don't know. So we're asking folks, as hard it is, as it is to sort of, let's wait and see what happens. Yeah.
So I looked at the map somewhat, trying to figure it out and stuff, and the village, for instance, is all in red.
Yeah.
For more development.
That.
And what I'm saying is, it's all houses, it's already, I don't believe there's too much parcels left other than dams and stuff like that.
Well, that's one of the flaws of this process. For sure, it feels at times more like a current future, more of a current land use map than a future land use map. And again, that is the statute as written.
And with that, with that being said, you know, of course, I own the land up on Rutland side. And with the city encroaching us way, we wanna bring business in town. And here we got something, we can't even, not to wanna develop my land. But I'm not gonna be wrong forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Shelley's hand was up.
One of, one of the things that I asked our listeners to look at the village outlines to see, in their opinion, what might be better boundaries than what you show at the present moment.
Yeah, that's, you know, we just met, for instance, we just met with the town of Cassin. They, they wanted to expand their village area quite a bit. And we're able to expand pretty much what they've requested. So we're all ears, you know, if, if it can be done, we will, we will do it. Um, the biggest question is, you know, once we submit that map, if the land use review board hacks it apart, they hack it apart. So, you know, we are at their, their mercy that way. However, I think everything that we've, I've heard or, you know, the little manipulations of the village center area that have been considered. Those are not unreasonable. I think those will pass the straight face test. Now, if we were to blanket the entire town with a big purple swath or pink swath saying the whole thing's a village, obviously that's not gonna pass muster.
Yep.
Shelley, did you have?
Yeah, the tier three, the municipal public process, how does that information get passed out to the public to find out about it?
Yeah, um, so there's a couple of different ways. We have been trying to promote it through our newsletters, our Facebook, that sort of thing. The land use review board itself has its own dedicated website. And since it's a state-level board, you know, there could be more done to get that information directly to towns. Right now, it's sort of up to us and you all to sort of seek that information out. Um, because it's like the act two fifty commission was, you know, it is a central body for the entire state of Vermont. Uh, so Shelley, if you, even if you just Google land use review board Vermont, all their agendas and minutes and information are right on that website. Um, so.
Okay, thanks.
So we get back to Bob, Robert's question on the fact of how come the whole of the board didn't know about this get-together. And there's, I can understand, first, the regional, or our town planning guy with John McKenna. And then it was his notion is that middle of the day is when he could meet. Knew you couldn't, pretty sure that, um, Don probably couldn't. And of course, Cash is working every day for the town. So I think that's how it happened. And Kim, I, you notified or did something, I can't remember. Did you notify everybody or just the folks that could do it or what?
No, when we decided to do that at the, in, at the meeting.
I don't think that I notified the whole board that the meeting was happening.
Yeah, so I think my strategy in the attempt was, let's meet as quickly as we can with the chair of the planning commission and the board. And then they could relay that information to you all. And then they asked me, hey, would it make more sense if you just came on the twentieth century? Um, so yeah, I mean, strategy-wise, it was just, um, get it on the calendar as done as quickly as possible. So yeah, I mean, strategy-wise, it was just, um, get it on the calendar, it's done as quickly as possible in here now, so.
That's because we had a timeframe. And if you remember at the last meeting, it was when this young lady told us about the dates and times and all this stuff.
Yep.
We said, no, wait a minute. And then after that, we, John asked if we could have you, get in touch with you to come at the meeting. And we assumed, and you know what happens when you assume, that if we had three members here of the select board, it had to be a warned meeting. And, but when we asked, Rob was working, you were working, and you were working. So George and I said, okay, we're retired, so we'll come down.
Well, to be, to be quite clear on that, Mike is good at twisting arms, so that's what happened to me in here.
You were supposed to be an out taker, yeah. So either way, you know, that aside, um-
I twisted your arm, George?
You know, one other thing I will mention, and that is important to bring up, is that this has been discussed at the Regional Planning Commission level over the last several months, you know? We brought this draft to the towns after our, our commission has reviewed it. We have been asking our commissioners to try to really communicate the process and where we have to you all. And so we have been asking commissioners to do that. And so if that's not been happening, I would suggest that you guys have a discussion with your commissioner to say, hey, we want reports back on what's happening at the RPC. Obviously, you know, our minutes are, and we record all of our meetings and our newsletters are available. And I know you're all busy men, you're running a town. You don't necessarily have time to watch an hour and a half YouTube video of our meetings. However, this process works best when there's a two-way street of communication and that we're able to communicate with you all directly through our commissioner and they're able to communicate your concerns back to us. Because we do have 27 towns. And as much as I would love to be at every single one of your meetings, I just, I can't physically be here. So I do want to press upon you that this is not new. The process, like I said, has been going on since 2023. And we have dedicated this regional plan update to one thing, being super transparent and trying to make sure that it is locally led, not just us pecking away at our keyboards in an office by ourselves, but reflecting the priorities of all towns in this region. So, um, just have to mention that because we're really trying to cultivate that good communication with our commissioners, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight, yes.
That cleared a lot of things up for me.
Yeah. These, these areas, they're gonna be designated as critical wetlands.
Critical natural resources.
Oh, well, yeah, whatever, whatever. Let's assume you have some business that's currently plumped in the middle of one of these places. What does that happen to that business?
Well, that's a hypothetical that I really can't answer.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I am not the one making this process, sir, so I think you gotta recognize that. And two, um, if you're plopped in the middle of a critical natural resource, I'm guessing you know about it. Because if you haven't acted-
Yeah, but you may have been there for 30, for a century.
Well, that's potentially possible, right? Um, however, you would still have to go through Act 250 either way. And that would have still come up, there's still wetlands and several criteria that address this. So again, this doesn't reshape all of Act 250, it's always existed for the last 60 years and it will still. So, um, if you fell under Act 250 in this hypothetical that you're mentioning before, before this map, you still would have had to go through that process.
What if you didn't?
Then you wouldn't now.
Oh, so you're saying, if you're, if you're, if, if Act 250 didn't apply when it was passed in the 70s, 1971 or something? And, and you're in this area, it's a critical natural resource, all this red doesn't mean anything to you?
You're already established.
Yeah, if you-
Oh, that's great, that's fine.
Right, unless you're developing something new, that is where-
Well, and that's what I was gonna jump in and say. So if you fall under the three acre rule, you absolutely get put into Act 250.
Yeah, and I, I sincerely hope that they are going to continue to refine the three acre rule because there are a lot of major issues with three acre. Um, and I know, Robert, you know this extremely well, and we're trying to help you guys out. Um, there are flaws there. And, you know, them, that process even being under Act 250 is kind of a flaw. But certainly, you know, we testified last year, uh, as part of the Regional Planning Commission's trying to provide some support to three acre to say, hey, why don't we dial this back? Why don't we allow more natural resources solutions outside of these cities where there is no space to build this stuff? So we're hoping there will be future changes. And I know our delegation is certainly well aware of those issues at hand, so.
And Devin, I, I want you to hear too, the frustration is not with you all.
I know, I know, we are the messenger.
The frustration with, from my part is 100 and, yes, it's probably a carryover from the three acre rule. Um, but my frustration 100% is with Montevillier. It is not you, it is the, I mean, these unelected A and R and land use, you know, all of those crew up there that get put in these positions of power that ultimately have the trickle-down effect to the rest of us. And you're in the crosshairs of them just as much as we are. So, um, I want you to hear that, that-
Thank you, Robert, that means a lot. And, you know, I hope you guys know at the end of the day, we serve one purpose and that is to help you guys and to help the region prosper. And, you know, some of the rules being handed down don't necessarily support that, so we're working on it. So I appreciate that.
That's the problem, losing local level.
That's right, the local, it's the loss of local control.
All right.
Great, well, thank you very much for the time. And I'll see you guys on the 4th, right?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you again, thank you, Devin.
All right. We have to go back to approve those past minutes.
No, we already approved the minutes, we're good to go.
No, 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 the, the-
No.
Oh, those, they just get signed, we don't have to motion them. So, just whoever needs to sign them.
Are you sure?
Yes.
We're good.
We're good.
They're there for public view anytime.
Yep.
And the, the check on that is the fact that your clerk is supposed to review stuff before it comes to the board, which your clerk, your clerk does do that in terms of expenditures.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, clerk, that's what you keep telling me.
Oh, damn, finally calling me on it.
See, when I was elected here, I didn't know that came along with it, so.
Yeah, description.
Apparently.
All right, any public comments anymore?
Yeah, actually, I agree with Cash with pulling the clouds out, the frames out because you're not beating them through the summer. Um, and saving on the exposure to the elements. And I agree with him, stuff does happen. Not, not unnecessary. But yeah, it's a good idea to pull off as much stuff as you can that's seasonal.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, thanks, Dan. All right, new business, uh, Lister, Bob Underwood, and-
Underhill.
Yeah, him too. And, uh, to discuss the Chippin, Chippin Hook School. You wanna?
Go for it.
Your table's falling apart, your other corner fell off, Cash.
Want that one?
No, I don't want that one, I said, I'm not gonna have that one.
I already picked it up twice.
It's got, it's got sticky on there, sticky it on.
Those, those parts aren't gonna last all about two weeks.
Yeah, especially when it comes time to move the tables to boot. We'll be finding them all over the place. Uh, go ahead, Bob.
So, you know, roughly a year and a half ago, we, you know, acquired the former Chippin Hook Schoolhouse. Uh, and after acquiring it, you know, we're the first, having property, we needed to get liability, general liability insurance. And not knowing kind of where to go, how to do that, yeah, I went to the Vermont Historical Society for guidance. And they, you know, didn't offer any from their perspective, but they gave me a list of historical societies in Vermont that owned old one-room schoolhouses for me to contact. And 201, when I went to them, they didn't own their schoolhouses. You know, this was like new to me, that apparently the norm is that the communities own these old schoolhouses. And I subsequently learned that even the Rutland Historical Society does not own their building, the city does. You know, they occupy it, but the city owns it. And, you know, what we, you know, also came to learn is that it's the towns that have the long-term continuity. Not, you know, small nonprofit organizations, you know, they're going strong, they lose a couple volunteers, then suddenly they're not. And, you know, we observed, you know, when we first organized, we, you know, kind of studied all the area ones, what are they doing, how are they doing things? And there, there's a couple that were going really strong then that, you know, now they're not or they've had to scale back. And we're going strong now, we're, we're doing well, we've, you know, come a long way in, you know, not that many years. But the schoolhouse had been owned since 1893 by the West Clarendon Church and Hall Association. And then they were defunct. And, you know, it, basically the schoolhouse, which, by the way, is, you know, you would know, it's the oldest public structure in this town, it's the only remaining intact one-room schoolhouse. Uh, and it is literally one of the oldest one-room schoolhouses in this state, still in existence. You know, a lot of them, they start, they talk about, you know, the old schoolhouse they're preserving, you know, and it's from 1850, 1880. Uh, there aren't many that go back to 1808. You know, it literally is one of the oldest in the state, not the oldest, but it is one of them. But for the long haul, it does make more sense for the town to own it. You know, that our tent for the past year and a half, you know, we've done a lot of work cleaning up the property, cleaning out piles of garbage that was-
Stuff.
You know, left behind, uh, you know, in the building. You know, there was a lot of structural work done in the basement to properly support the building. You know, all the original hand carved beams and logs still with bark on them are there, but they were getting a little punky. Uh, and that's all been, you know, they're still there, but new wood has been added to properly support it. Uh, we're about ready to begin addressing another, the other major structural issue, that south wall that's bowed, uh, because somewhere along the way, when it went from two windows to seven, they removed, to fit all those windows, they removed the vertical support. You know, without putting something more in its place, so there's not much holding up that, you know, side. We're ready to do that, uh, and historically bring it back to, you know, where it had been. But, you know, in the end, though, we're, you know, healthy, going strong now for the long haul because we came very close to being at a point that there was no way to save that building, you know, again. Uh, you know, we found two people still alive that were part of the West Clarendon Church and Hall Association, who worked with us, you know, to transfer. But if we didn't have those two people, there wasn't a mechanism, you know, to deal with that. And the building would have, you know, sat there till the point of no return was reached.
Are you suggesting to the select board that the town take that over?
Take ownership of it. You know, our intent is we will continue with our repairs, you know? We've been most, other than cleaning up inside and out, you know, the property, you know, the first focus has been dealing with structural issues. Because, you know, we've differentiated, you know, what we call the structural stuff, the basement, that wall, you know? And after that, then, you know, we get what we use the term the prettying up part, you know, of the building, you know, the more cosmetic things. And because we're doing this with volunteer labor and with donations, you know, it's not beneficent. We got an awful lot done in the past year and a half, you know? But it's not like you can hire a contractor and just go to town and do it because we don't have that kind of money. And we're not looking, we're not asking the town for, you know, any money. Our intent is to keep chipping away, you know, with our volunteer labor, with our, uh, you know, donations that we, you know, raised, you know, to bring the building back into a more preserved state. You know, the ultimate goal and reason we went down this road at all is, given the historic nature, you know, one of the oldest in the state, the oldest in this town, the only remaining one-room schoolhouse in this town uh, that's still intact as a, you know, schoolhouse, is that it's a big part of the history of this community and that it's still there for future generations.
Now, they, the, the property it sits on belongs to, to the town.
No, they own it.
So-
For a long time, the town had it on a grand list as if it did, but there wasn't really a basis for that. And so the select board had agreed, yeah, there probably isn't. And we were able, with the same two people that, you know, conveyed the structure itself to us, uh, then conveyed the land, which sort of solves, solves what could have been a sticky, an issue you don't want to have to deal with five or 10 years from now where maybe you don't have anyone to be working with.
Do you have, um, any legal access that shows how the town could legally take that over? Do you have-
We just have to convey it to you.
It's a quick claim, quick claim deed.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all.
We, we have two deeds, one for, because we did it in two transactions, first the building and then the land. And we would convey it to the town, so that, that mechanism is easy. It's just, it safeguards because the town goes on forever and it's not reliant upon a small nonprofit organization going on forever.
Let me ask Bob a quick question, what's the average age of the members of the Historic Society now?
I, well, if we're talking our board of directors, I, I think we have one person in her 60s. Beyond that, everyone else is 70s and 80s.
So that, the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, it's the kind of thing that young folks probably won't be interested in until they get to be old folks. And so hopefully we'll have some-
And we hope we have another group of old folks that replace the current old folks.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
But that doesn't always work as we've seen with, not just Historic Societies, uh, but with Historic Societies, you have, you know, a couple people holding it together. And when they're not there, it, things start diminishing.
Well, let, let, let me point out the fact that we have a building that we all affectionately call the Grange. Where's the Grange Organization in town? Been gone a long time. And that's what's happening because our modern world has had other ways for folks to study or have entertainment or whatever you want to call it. So they're not relying on those kinds of organizations that used to be the forefront of what people did. I mean, I can remember as a kid going to the Grange here, and I'm sure some other folks here can, so.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into research on the conveyance of the schoolhouse to the Town of Clarendon, as well as an agreement to be put in place between the Town of Clarendon and, um, the Historical Society for, um, organizational lifetime use and, um, uh, residency at it, uh, as long as the organization is viable.
So you're, you're, you're suggesting that we have a memorandum of agreement between?
Absolutely.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Any? I just had one question on, what, what's the ultimate goal as to once this building is back to, you know, habitable? Had, had, habitable? Is, is it like, could it be used for public things? Or, or is it gonna be like a museum type thing?
Juice is going to be limited because you don't have water or sewer there.
And there's no heat probably, right?
Well, we can add-
Other than a wood stove?
Well, there isn't any heat now, you know, there isn't any electricity now. We can add electricity, you know, and our intent is to add electricity. And we can add, you know, heat to it. Water and sewer, not so much, it's a, it's a small parcel. And the cost of putting water and sewer is grossly prohibitive. And so the use, uses are going to be limited. You can have as many of these buildings are, you know, you have sort of historic display, you know, little mini museum kind of thing. And, you know, door- And, you know, during, you know, decent weather, uh, because, you know, there's not a parking lot, you know, there either. You know, in the summertime, we're parking on the lawn, you know. But you're basically talking of, you know, spring to fall kind of usage, where you can have, you know, meetings there, you know, you can have your displays. Uh, you know, honestly, our initial intent was basically to save the building, deal with it legally, so that the building could be saved, because it was rapidly approaching the point that there were no solutions available. And now, from that, we moved into the, okay, we have to physically save the building, deal with the structural issues, uh, so that the building can still be there. But then, the prettying of putting it back into use is that, you know, final phase. But it is limited what you can-
Right, I didn't quite realize it was quite-
It's not like the Grange that, you know, you, you've got an elevator-
I know it's not that big.
You've got bathrooms and water, and you've got, you know, everything. This, it's not practical for the, you know, the parcel is very small.
You know, I can see in the future that you would have some grade school kids going just to see the building and to have, you know, some exposure, I mean.
This is what grandpas saw.
Yes.
Great-grandpa.
Be careful, I attended one room schoolhouse.
Great, great-grandpa.
And Bob Vixby up there. John, did you?
They see the two chalkboards, well, there's three in there now, but two are really old. One is at a height for big kids to use, and one is down low for the little kids to be using. And, you know, I doubt there's, you know, that, that sort of thing, oh, what is this, and right next to each other, that you've got all these age groups?
Simmetry, right. Did you, you said aside?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
I remember when it was-
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Now, to move this forward, you're gonna have to get something in writing?
Yeah, well, we have to, you know, do a legal conveyance.
It's got to be a legal conveyance. You're gonna have, you're gonna start working with our lawyer and their lawyer.
Yeah, and that would be the, yeah, you have to have a legal conveyance, and then, you know, sort of agreement-
Quick claim and the agreement.
You guys are gonna, you guys are gonna proceed on this then.
What will help on this, being the only one-room schoolhouse in the area?
Oh, sure.
For Historic.
Yep.
Yeah. And sheer age of that building. It's just older than most of them you're gonna see anywhere in the state.
Well, the one thing that I know is that Bob Vixby and I, it's older than we are.
Threw you right under the bus, didn't they? That wasn't your schoolhouse, all right?
Not that one, but this one was Bob's, right here, right?
Well, that building was still used as school till nineteen seventy.
Oh, yeah.
There are people in their sixties that went to school there.
Yeah, I went to school there.
Long time ago. Seems like yesterday. Anyways, I'm very happy that we've done that, and, uh, we'll get a memorandum of agreement between the town and the Historic Society on who's doing what.
Yep, we can approve it.
And the deeds will be forthcoming. Okay, what's next?
Kevin Peck.
Yes, Kevin. Yeah, Kevin.
Mr. Peck.
I got that name right.
You're, okay. Well, the, uh, on the agenda is the mowing. Last year, we accepted the bids, and once again, the last two years have had what seems to be a good working relationship, a good responsive relationship with the mowers. This year has not been such. On March, they started moving the leaves off the property, off the cemeteries. And I noticed April first, that they blew the leaves up against the fence on the north. And then if you walk out the door, a big pile down here in the corner, down by the road. I contacted them April second, and requested that they remove the leaves. Can't be left there. Consequently, as we all know, we're property owners, you don't keep your brush back to your property line, your property line starts getting shallower. So they said they would take care of it. It's in winter, April was, well, it was wet, and so on and so forth. I went to Virginia, see family, came back eight, uh, on the twelfth, sat down in my chair, looked out, and when I drove in, I saw, it hasn't been mowed yet. I expect at least to be mowed by May twelfth, at least one morning, because the contract reads that the cemeteries are supposed to be in pristine shape, uh, all the major holidays, and one of them being Mother's Day and Father's Day. And this was two days after Mother's Day. And so I contacted the mowers and said, listen, you haven't mowed, what's going on? You haven't removed the leaves. Uh, they said, uh, you know, been weather and issues, but they get to it this week or next, and going, or much longer. You're really gonna be dealing with a lot of high grass. Well, the mowers came on the sixteenth, and they hit the Marsh Cemetery. And the Marsh Cemetery is part of the most lush of all of our cemeteries. And they just laid a, you know, uh, mulled grass, a blanket on top of it. They mowed, uh, they blew the clippings into the Gilman's Fence, six, eight inches up through, all the way down through, it was bank right up. Uh, then they hit Chippin Hook, and they came here. Uh, I saw, my wife and I were putting out flags, uh, Friday. They were in there working, so I didn't bother with them. Uh, when I came back Saturday morning, they hadn't done any, the large areas had not been trimmed. Weed whacked, as are required to trim around the stones and blow off the stones. Uh, they had hit here, and, you know, the front half looks good. And last week, or earlier in the week, I took Mike and George out. The back half hasn't been-
Hasn't been touched.
Hasn't been trimmed. They ran the mower, but hasn't trimmed. Uh, I reached out to them, uh, well, in fact, it was so bad, there was an intern that finally, it was four years in the process, for the Fox family up in Chippin Hook. And I went up on Thursday afternoon, and I weed whacked the ewing and fox plots myself, so at least it was presentable and nice, and, you know, I think it says a lot about the town, you know, you're staying in a hayfield burying your loved one. And so I took care of that. I reached out to them again, and finally had some contact with them yesterday. Uh, once again, you know, problems with the weather, problems with the issue, uh, equipment. I pointed out to them that, you know, look at the ball field over there in Chippin Hook, that's been mowed a couple times. You know, they had, they had to deal with the same weather that, that you had to. So, this, he is, he's promised that he will get things in shipshape within the next week or so. I informed him that the board was going to be addressing this issue tonight, that he was welcome to come to it. Uh, they're not here, but he told me he would be taking care of it. So, I don't know where, how, how you folks want to go forward. You are generally the ones ultimately in charge of the cemetery. We have two select board meetings between now and when the new contract, Don doesn't know, the new contract runs from July first to June thirtieth. So we have got two select board meetings before the new contract kicks in, which they own the new con, they, they were, uh, had successful in the bid of a new contract. I did reach out to two of the people who bid for this year, for July first contract, and they say to me that their bids are still good. Still good, considerably higher, but still good. So I'm-
When you say considerably higher, what, what magnitude?
They're considerably higher. Eight to nine thousand dollars.
Like, ten grand, yeah.
One of them does the ball field over in Chippin Hook, does the wreck areas. If you look at the Chippin Hook Ball Field, one home, if you go by, I mean, it, it looks, it looks good.
They were there yesterday, I think, wasn't it?
So, I would make a motion that we author, that we ask him before this week is out, well, there's only one more day, so by Monday, by the end of the day, Monday, if possible, to draft a formal letter from the select board stating that if the cemeteries are not in shape by our next meeting, which is the second of, second Monday of June, that the select board will be considering rescinding their contract for July one and pursuing another option.
Ooh. Second. Any further discussion?
So did you say that you've got some other people that are bidding for the up and coming year?
We had, we had, we had three bids last fall.
So the twenty-five, twenty-six season?
We gave it to the same company.
The new contract will be up in twenty-six.
New contract, this contract ends June thirtieth.
Right, but the, the one coming up next week.
Yeah, it starts July first and ends June thirtieth for next year.
I think it's good timing that you brought that up, because, uh, you know, we'll have time before the end of the month, before the new contract begins to tell these people.
You're giving them two weeks to get in shipshape, or we're pulling the plug?
And although they did have their bids accepted, the official, the official contracts have not been signed by both parties.
Okay, have, have they signed it?
I was just writing them up and sending it to them to sign, and I haven't received it back yet.
Oh, so they have gotten it? I was gonna say I would-
They received it, but they haven't signed it and sent it back, and you all haven't signed it, to make it official.
Okay, so in my letter, I would state that the Clarendon Select Board's not going to sign the new contract until we're satisfied.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's just the simple way. We're not gonna execute the contract until we're satisfied.
Okay.
And give them a date?
And also, can I ask that-
Two weeks, next, next meeting.
Be implied in that, that if this were to continue into the new contract year, the select board, as it says in the contract, deserves the right to-
Cancel.
Cancel it.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
They're not adhering to their, the terms of the contract.
Which, what are the cancellation terms, thirty days in it?
I think so.
We've got, we just have to give thirty days notice and pull the plug? Okay.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yep, most contracts are that way.
All right, so there's a motion made.
It was seconded.
Yes. Yep. Who seconded it, George?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You'll hear from him, Kim.
Mr. Chairman, to save time, I would make a motion that we do not enter into the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion?
Would this be something we're discussing at another time? Or is this just something-
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying we're not getting involved with it.
Okay.
This country runs on trucking. I mean, we're not, we're not a railroad coun- country anymore.
This one was, this was sent to me personally first, before I got it from Kim. And, uh, I started, I started to read it, and it went on and on and on. And I was like, is this a scam? I didn't even-
Yeah, the motor needs a truck, it's gonna- So there's a motion made, who seconded it? George?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cash seconded it.
You don't even look like- You don't even look like you. Yeah, no, no.
Oh, I keep, yeah, well.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, old business. George, that's me. My golly. Well, uh, on the transfer station, I've been visiting every day. They've been open since we started in April first, and things are going pretty well with, under Horace, uh, direction. We still have the ongoing problem that we all know about, but I think that's getting some better. And what, to make sure that we get as best, uh, work as we can, uh, we're having, uh, three people on Saturday to make sure that punching is as accurate as possible. Now, I decided I would do a little, um, test on how well we're doing. So I got, went and bought a, I'm not sure what they call it, but a little device that you use if you're checking inventory, you want to count things, you push the button.
The clicker?
Yeah, it goes one, two, and three. So I gave one to Horace, and he kept track for a week, a Wednesday and a Saturday. And he, uh, recorded three hundred and eighty punches, which I think probably makes sense, near as I can determine from the history that I, we've had, is our usage is somewhere between three and four hundred, uh, taxpayers making use of the transfer station. And I would guess it's probably closer to three hundred than four hundred. So what I did is I did a little, uh, speculation, and I came up with, how many punches will make sense? This will appreciate if you into, if you're into any kind of accounting, you were gonna blow it full of holes, but I don't care, it gives us a read. And I have one if you'd like to look at it. I'll give it to a friend of mine that might be interested in thinking about it. So anyways, uh, obviously, the accuracy of that experiment probably could be one way or the other a bit. And we'd need several weeks to decide how, to make some kind of a average, I guess. So the question I had was, well, how many punches will be needed a week to cover an eighty thousand year expense? So if you take the eighty thousand and divide it by two, which is our cost per punch, it says we need forty thousand punches in a year to, uh, equally eighty thousand. And so if you have forty thousand punches divided by fifty-two weeks, we need seven hundred and sixty-nine punches versus the three eighty that I did on my test.
Oh, that was not just one day, that was a week? That was two days or-
But either way, you're looking at a significant decrease in the deficit.
You're, you're-
With that, with that-
Forty thousand instead of eighty thousand.
There's still, well, we knew that. I mean, we knew, we knew building in how we changed things. We were, we were just looking to decrease the deficit.
You know, that's, that's taking roughly thirty grand out there.
Correct, that's, that's gonna decrease the deficit pretty significantly.
And bear in mind that when we did our budget, that I increased the income by eleven thousand, which is roughly double what it was the year before. And so the, that reflects the fact that we doubled the price, so hopefully that we'll make more than double.
Correct.
That will be in better shape.
About third more?
Yeah.
It, either way, it shows that the steps we took are gonna make an impact.
It's headed to the positive, more positive.
Yeah, exactly. But then you also have to remember that when that opened initially, any recycling, they took for nothing. Yep, which they don't now.
Which we can't now, yeah.
Now, and now you have to pay for them to come. And then they still make money, because then they recycle that stuff, and they get paid for recycling. One of the things I thought I might do is, uh, when we get heavier into the summer season, is do another test run like this, just to see what happens. And, uh, to me, it might be an interesting discussion we need to have in budget time. So anyways, that's it, thank you.
One little comment I got, I appreciate it going to two days, because three days is sometimes a stormstorm, it's hard for us to get over there to plow that out.
Yep.
So that eliminates one, one day that we don't have to be there.
Oh, to clear out the parking lot.
More open window.
Well, that's good. All right, uh, you're done, George, right?
Thank you, George.
So my accounting friend, does that make sense, what I was trying to do?
Yeah, I mean, how many users there are is irrelevant, it's how many punches there are.
Punches the key.
Punches is the key. I don't care if you got one person, you know, one person, one person using the place. It's how, it's how many punches are-
Correct, is it being accurately done?
Well, as he says, how accurate they were is a question.
Sure, there's margin of error, there's gonna be.
Oh, yes, of course.
There's gonna be.
The one thing that I had discussed with Horace before we leave the topic is that if we had one person doing the punching, which we, which would be more accurate, but what we'd have to do is to have a traffic set up, so it would have to be one vehicle at a time, so that one person could take the trash, see what's recyclables. But the confusion is the, for getting rid of the cardboard and the food waste, you got a lot of things going on, so it's gonna, it would be very tough. But that would increase the accuracy.
What I did appreciate, I don't know if you all saw it, but the Clarendon Community page, it did hit that page about a week or so ago. There was a post about, somebody just noticed the cards changed.
Yeah, it was on there, yeah, the two tickets.
Yeah, and I appreciated the number of residents that followed our discussion that jumped in on the comments and said, yeah, like, where you been? This has, this has been being talked about for months and-
It's a select board meeting, right?
Yeah, so like, I, I appreciated the fact that there were residents that jumped in and said, yeah, that, you know, recycling costs more than, like, that, I think, even got commented in there, like, yeah, recycling's costing the town more than trash right now, and all of those types of things, so. But thank you, at least, I know it's not exact rocket science, George, but at least for the, uh, the basic information, that it looks like we're headed in the right direction. So I appreciate, appreciate you doing the homework.
Yep.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Were the, were the punches being counted by the same person who was actually punching the cards?
Yes and no. We, uh, one person was doing the tabulation. And the rest of the folks would come as conveniently as they could and, and report what they'd done.
How many, how many bags actually got, well, how many, how many, whatever containers- How many, how many bags actually got, well, how many, whatever, containers, bags?
So they were reporting it.
Recycle versus something, okay.
I don't know that.
Okay, well, how many, how many, I haven't been, haven't been dumping in a long time. How many, how many streams are there? So you have trash.
You got trash, cardboard, food waste.
One thing, right?
Yeah, trash is one thing, no sort recycling is one thing, cardboard is one thing, food waste is one thing.
So you got four things.
Four things, okay.
Four things. Oh, actually, there's five. You got metal, and you got electronics.
But that's, that's still recyclables.
Yes.
So the question is, is, and these are all separated from one another by area, so.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And it's a lot of people.
Yeah, you gotta run around, you know.
Well, you have a lot of people, you have one guy, one person watching one particular thing, and then you can't go wrong, but it's gonna be a little bit difficult.
Yep. Well, as I said, I think we ought to have a very vigorous discussion at budget time on, on the whole topic again.
Oh, yeah, meanwhile, you can keep.
Meanwhile, we'll keep going and see how it works.
All right, moving along. Rob, you want?
I don't, I don't need it.
Well, you might wanna go home and think about it.
Oh, no, no, I try to think about it as much as I want to.
I was tasked with.
The rest of it will be a waste.
I was tasked with drafting a letter that we tabled last time. I did finally get some thoughts down, and I'll read it just for the public. This is a draft, it's not, the board's gonna give feedback, and we'll have to do some fine tuning, I'm sure, to get it taken care of, but, so this would go to the legislative delegation. So it says, we, the Clarendon Board of Selectmen, wish to make you aware of a recent issue that we hope can be worked on next legislative session. School board vacancies have been an issue in the past, as currently the statute rests the appointing powers on school boards themselves. This became a concern during COVID, when we had a vacancy, and there was no requirement for the school board to even consult the town-elected officials with regards to who they felt should be considered. Since that time, there has been an addendum to the statute which requires school boards to consult with the towns. It is our belief that legislative intent was for the addendum to rectify the problem, and that school boards would take a town-elected official's recommendations and appoint that person. Recently, again, we again faced this issue. The school board followed statute and consulted the Board of Selectmen, but then promptly overruled the select board's recommendation. This means that our town's elected officials were overruled in who they felt should represent them by the school board representatives of three neighboring towns, not elected by the voters of the town of Clarendon. This raises serious concerns in our minds about the issue of local control, and we would call upon the legislature to put more power in the statute for select boards to appoint representatives to the school board vacancies and their apportioned town seats. Currently, on our local school board, that is not the case, and we would urge the legislature to act so that this issue does not affect us or any towns in our state again.
I think that's printed, that sounds good to me.
Is this going back to Denny Miller and Dave Potter and?
Yes.
Dave Potter's not, did he get elected? He didn't get elected, did he?
They appointed Dave Potter.
He appointed him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, never mind, local delegation does not include.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, they did appoint him.
So I'm sure it needs a grammar run through, but.
I don't know who. You think it needs to be looked over?
Yes, it does.
Well, grammatically, it needs to be done through.
Yeah, I mean.
I am not an English teacher.
Well, that, that's a different thing.
I can be dead, I climb poles for a living.
What's that?
I said, I'd be happy to do that.
That would, that would be my suggestion, because I know that, well, some of you probably know, but if you don't, I'll mention it right now, Kim and I worked at the same company many years ago, and I have a high regard for her ability on language issues.
So do you wanna then let this?
Well, the question is, is the board good with it, because I think if the board's good with it, we can approve it just with grammatical fixes.
I would make that motion.
And then it can be signed and sent off.
All right, George, you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve this letter as presented, subject to grammatical corrections.
I'll second that. Donnie, you're seconding it.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, George, do you want us to sign this?
We'll have to sign it after it's.
This is just, this is just what the letter would look like, I believe, right?
And I don't know, we have, Town of Clarendon letterhead, probably of some sort, we should create and put on it.
We usually make one up, yeah.
Um, and then I have just, I have all of the, this delegation's labels already made up, so I can give you labels, so. I've danced that dance a few times this session, so.
What are you trying to say, Rob?
You've been in the three acre rule.
Yeah. Needless to say, I had to do quite a few mailings, so I've got labels already made, so.
All right, so you have to get this?
As long as the board's happy, yeah, that's good.
All right, town officers, Kevin, do you have anything else you wanna say?
Nope, no sir.
Uh, Underwood, do you have anything?
Sorry.
I was trying to joke with him before, but Rob stepped on my toes.
No, we're good.
Okay. I guess that's all.
Would you believe that they changed your name? That's okay, Kim, don't worry about it.
Office.
Select board's concerns, Cass?
The only concern I have is what George is probably gonna say, but George, you don't, you said it off already, thank you.
All right, George?
Go ahead.
I'm fine tonight.
Me too.
Surprise, surprise.
I failed in following Mr. Bixby's footsteps, and it is always tradition of this board, the week of Memorial Day, that we have a moment of silence for those that served our country from our town, and we lost. So I think, I know it's the end of the meeting, but it'd be appropriate to do that now.
Okay, good idea.
God bless the Marine Corps.
That's all I have.
All right, Donnie? I have no concerns. All right, now, who wants to make a motion to go into executive session for personal discussion?
I'll second it.[1778.11]